All right, good evening and welcome to the February 12, 2024 study session of Livonia City Council. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance led by the Honorable Scott Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Good evening. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,987th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 28, 2024, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that we have one absent. Councilwoman Laura Toy has a basic, I think, just some scattered plans today without joining us. Won't get further into it. With that, I'm going to move on to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on the agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Seeing none, I will move to council announcements. Council? Seeing none, we will move right into tonight's study agenda with new business under item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This is from Dave Groff in order to host a party with a band to be held Thursday, July 4, 2024, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the homes located at 1-8111 and 1-8133 Floral Street. Is a petitioner here? Would you mind coming up, state your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about this party with a band?
Dave Groff, 1-8133 Floral. The party, it's an annual party we have every year, and the only reason I knew the band permit was a thing is because other neighbors have bands and they get the permit. So, trying something new this year, never done it.
Sounds great. Do I have direction from council? Mr. Jolly?
Yeah, Mr. President, just a question real quick. Are the neighbors coming to the party?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
That makes it easier. I'll make a motion to approve on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. And if it's okay, Mr. Donavick, if he can get an invite this year, he would appreciate that, I'm sure.
We got the addresses. I didn't know the date. I come on by.
Your item's been approved, it's on consent, so if you want to come and hang out with us in a couple of weeks, but your item is all but assured to pass.
There's a spot in the band for some singing opportunities?
I'm sure.
Brandon's got great talent in singing, so.
Yeah, no, I can do that.
So McCullough will sing, and Donavick likes water slides. He's a big fan.
The adult stuff, not for the kids, for sure.
Well, thank you very much.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too. All right, moving on to item number, oh, you know what? Anything from the audience in regards to that item? Seeing none. Moving on to item number two is an appointment of Mary Chalino to the Livonia Board of Review from the Office of the Mayor for a term which will expire February 16, 2026. Good evening. The floor is yours, sir.
Jacob, Assistant City Assessor. This is Mary Chalino. She's a longtime assessor. She worked for the city for, I believe it was 17 years. She's now retired and would like to serve on the board.
Awesome. Would you like to just give a two-hour presentation about your life history?
No, I'd rather not.
Would you like to say anything for the, for, you know, a little bit about yourself or anything to that matter?
Well, I worked for Livonia for a long time, and then I was working for Wayne County Assessing, and I left there, and now I'm available to work on the board, and I was asked, and I'd be very happy to serve.
Thanks, thank you for hanging out with us this evening. Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. She has a lot of experience in the assessing world, so I think it's only fitting that you'd be on the Board of Review. I'd like to make an approving for consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent? Anything else from council? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent, so again, if you'd like to hang out with us in a couple of weeks, if not, you do not have to. Your item is all but assured to be passed. Thank you. Is there anything on the audience on that motion? Seeing none. Moving on to item number three, which is a reappointment of Andrew Lindrum to the Livonia Board of Review from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term which will expire on February 16, 2027.
Next is Andy, longtime Realtor in the area. He's actually been voted the Chair of the Board for the last three years, so we would appreciate his reappointment.
Good evening, Mr. Lindrum.
Good evening.
How are you?
Better than most.
Well, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I would, I would like to offer an approving for consent, if that's okay with everyone here. Andy is a good guy, and I met him along the campaign trail, and he seems like a fine man, you know, great for the position. Thank you. Thank you for your previous service also.
Looks are deceiving.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent. Mr. Lindrum, thanks for joining us this evening. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Moving on to item number four, which is a reappointment of Jacob Ganem to the Livonia Board of Ethics from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term which will expire on March 1, 2027. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
I guess I'm doing the introduction on this one. Paul Burnier, City Attorney. Mr. Ganem has been on the board, Ethics Board, for ever since I can remember, and he's done a wonderful job there. I think he's familiar with everybody here. We're happy to have him because we're a representative on that Ethics Board also.
Thank you, Mr. Burnier. Would you like anything to say? You got the floor?
I'm happy to serve with pleasure.
Thank you for your service. Vice President?
I'd be happy to offer approving on consent for Mr. Ganem.
Mr. Ganem, you have an approving on consent. If you'd like to hang out with us in a couple of weeks, you can. If not, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything from the audience on this matter? Moving on to item number five, which is a reappointment of Suzette Samuels to the Livonia Board of Ethics from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term which will expire March 1, 2027.
And this is another, this is another one from the mayor's office. I would like to move for Suzette Samuels to be on, again, on her reappointment. I've known Suzette for, I hate to say it, 25, 30 years. We worked together for many years at the prosecutor's office, and I'm honored to call her a friend. We're lucky to have her.
Why do you hate to say it? It sounds like a good 25 years.
Yeah. I hate to say that it's been that old now.
Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to offer an approving for Ms. Samuels.
Thank you.
She's done a great job for her community. She's been active as well.
Thank you.
And we're in good hands with her on the board.
I appreciate that. And since I'm a longtime prosecutor, I've worked for everyone here for years already. Thank you so much. It's an honor.
Thank you for your service. Anything else from council? Again, you have it on a consent. This has been rolling pretty well. Thank you again for everything you do for the city.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We are going to move on to item number six, which is a request to approve the Livonia Police Officers Association of Michigan on behalf of its affiliate, Livonia Police Officers Association Police Service Aid Unit, Unit B Tentative Agreement. This is from the Civil Service Department for the period of December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2026. Oh, Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Seeing no one here, I would just say that I would like to offer an approving on consent with this. This seems pretty routine, and the P O M and the L P O A work this out together, and if the city is happy with this, so are we. So, I'd like to offer that approving.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I read this, and I'll just point out, since it's probably appropriate to point out some details here, this more or less extends a lot of the same benefits that were negotiated and previously approved by the council for L P O A to extend to the police service aides. So, P S A, Police Service Aides, those are police officers who are currently in training, pre-police academy, and possibly currently in criminal justice programs at Schoolcraft or Madonna or another institution. So it's a great resource for the city and the police department, and they do a lot of the jobs that keep the department functioning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Anything else from council? Seeing none. We have an approving on consent. Moving on to item number seven, which is a request for authorization to purchase one 2024 Ford Transit high roof, 15-passenger, all-wheel-drive van through the State of Michigan Cooperative Bid Process. This is coming to us from the Livonia Housing Commission for use by the Livonia Community Transit from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to ask for approval of a new van for our program. This is part of a routine. We usually order a new van every year just to keep the fleet up and running and maybe replace something with it, and so I'm asking for approval.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming tonight. Counsel, do I have direction?
I have a question.
Mr. Morgan?
Sir, the Chair. So is this replacing a, an old, broken-down van, or are we just providing a new one in this case?
Typically, it's used to replace a van.
Okay. So we have that already selected? We know what, what's going on here as far as one, one out, one in?
Yes.
And one's going to the auction, or does that go somewhere else in the city?
Um, it usually goes to auction, usually. Yeah.
All right. So it won't be the total price because it'll be minus that, whatever that may be, or that just goes back to the general fund?
That just, I think, goes back to the general fund. I'm not sure what happens to the sale of the vehicles, actually, the funds for that.
Okay. Very well. I'll offer an approving on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Jolly?
Since we have you here, is the situation with the drivers for transportation better than it was last time we spoke, or have things improved?
Yes, we got quite a number of applicants from the article that went into the Livonia paper, the Livonia New Today paper, I believe it was, and we've gotten quite a bit of applicants, and we've actually hired two.
Awesome.
Yes.
Good. Well, we appreciate everything you do and everything the drivers do, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks for being here this evening. I know to Mr. Jolly's point, there's been quite a lot of discussion about hiring and maintenance. What's maintenance like? I mean, we're spending $105,000 on a new van. Have we kind of handled the whole maintenance element of these things, or are you still struggling there?
Well, and if you mean in terms of where we're taking the vehicles for maintenance, we have like three shops that we've been using. One of them's A E, another one is Mobility Works, and the third one is Bill Brown Ford for Fleet Maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent. Thank you for hanging out with us today.
Uh-huh.
It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience on our awesome bus that we're purchasing? Seeing none. We're going to move on to number eight, which is a request to approve Art in the Park Program. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation to provide a low-cost framework for introducing art into the public spaces for 2024 from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President McCullough. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. You stated it very well. We're looking for low-cost ways to introduce art into the community, and this was an idea that we've looked at for a while and actually modeled it after several communities in the state of Michigan. What we're looking to do is partner with our local colleges and attract students to basically commission pieces of art, whether it's murals or sculptures or any sort of visual display, right? There would be an established public arts committee that would review these. I certainly would assist with that, and then we would go about a small stipend of $1,000 to, for materials and implement these pieces in, I believe, what did we say? Four sites this year would be our goal. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Counsel? Vice President?
Mr. Chair, thank you. And this actually may be for Mr. Burnier. I know we do have some zoning regulations regarding murals. Is this exempt, would this be exempt from that?
We've had the conversations with the signs. We don't believe it would run afoul of our zoning ordinances.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to override something there. Right, thank you.
Councilwoman Bezinski?
I'd just like a motion to approve on consent.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval on consent. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. Is this some of the art that goes out in the hallway here, and is that the plan, or is this something where we're going to be painting on buildings? Is that, I just wanted to understand that. I'm not quite clear.
Yeah, so it, what would happen is an artist would reach out to us with an application of saying, "This is what I'd like to do." Some sort of sketch or model of what they're planning, whether it is a mural on, let's say, for example, the newly-installed Comfort Station at Ben Chilani. You've seen the colors of it. I wouldn't be opposed to a mural on that Comfort Station necessarily. So what they do is propose this. This would go then to a public art, public art committee that we've proposed in this, in this document here, and then they would vote on that, right? They would then make plans to actually install a mural or a sculpture or whatever, so, and then we'd have that. That would be in place for up to five years, depending on condition with the, with the possibility of extending the agreement longer. So it's not necessarily like the pieces of work that we have hanging on the walls here at City Hall or that are at the library gallery. This would be, you know, they would be designed specifically for that space, whatever space we're talking about.
Okay, so it would be up to the committee, that the people that it goes to, you, to approve this to make sure that there's not something that's going to be very controversial that's painted on one of our
Yep.
...structures, correct?
I believe there was examples of what we've seen in other communities there, and most of them are, again, it's, it's scenes of baseball, or it's a giant purple hand. You know, there's lots of different things, so I don't believe that we're going to have anything even proposed to us that is controversial or obscene in any way.
Okay. I'd hope not, but, okay.
I do too.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Ted, I just want to commend you on this. I think this is something that our community is missing, and I think there's other communities who do things like this, and they have had a lot of success.
They have.
It's, it's little, I mean, like, it's, you know, there's some sculptures that are represented here by picture. There's also like little things, like, there's this little
Yeah.
Little, little green guy potentially breaking, I don't know what that thing is. But I think, you know, it's, it's this kind of simple, not simple art, but simple expressions within the community that inspire children and make them excited to go to a park or to kind of let their mind wander. And sometimes with, you know, our parks are great for providing natural spaces and play structures and all that kind of stuff, but this is a different way of expanding their minds and the opportunities available to them, so good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, I got to tell you, this is, this is a cool program. I know when I worked in my former life in the city of Novi, we had the Villa Bar Art Park. And I know that Novi
I know you're with it.
Yeah, and you had the artists in residence, and there were some goods and bads with that, that project, but something like this, I think it's innovative, it's something different, and I appreciate it. The one thing is, is this, I don't know if you heard about the, the rat impression in Chicago that everybody was putting on the concrete? That kind of reminded me of the green guy, basically. It was when the concrete was being poured, there must have been a rat that was in it. Look it up. It's fascinating. People are made little like, little like coins and stuff on it. Listen, if I, if that's my feed and nobody else has heard of it, then I think I need other medication, so I, can we disband that off the public record?
Where you have to search to get that at public
You know, it's real, and I know there's someone out there that knows about this, but whatever. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
You do have an approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number nine, which is an award of bid from the Department of Parks and Recreation for beverage and stack vending service at the Jack E. Kirksky Recreation Center for a three-year agreement. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President McCullough. Again, we are requesting that council approve the bid with specialized vending services. They've been our provider for the previous three years. We've had really a good working relationship with them. They, the machines are full, they pay on time. This is, in the vending world, this is two very difficult things to achieve that we've managed to achieve with them, and we're asking that you approve the award at the, which is our, the same as our current commission of 35%. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Davis, for being here. How much of the profits does the city get to keep of these sales?
We get 35% commission.
We get 35% of the remaining. Okay, thank you.
Vice President?
I'd be happy to offer approval on consent.
Thank you.
Anything else further from council? Seeing none from the audience? You have an approving on consent on item number nine. We will move on to item number 10, which is a request to adopt a resolution in support of an application for the, for the Michigan Historical Preservation Office, the 2024 CLG Grant. This is from the Department of Parks and Rec for the rehabilitation planning of the South Barn at Greenmead. Mr. Davis?
We got everything from art to vending to a grant application. We are asking council's approval and a resolution in support of this certified local government grant. Several years, or a few years ago, Greenmead and the Historic Preservation Commission undertook going after becoming a certified local unit of government through SHIPO. These are one of these grants that are available to us. We're asking for a $20,000 grant to provide engineering documents and architectural documents to, for work that needs to be done in the South Barn. If you've, I'm assuming nobody in, nobody here other than me has ever been inside the South Barn. It needs some help, right? We have some structural deficiencies in that. The North Barn, which is the older of the two, is, is stable and fine, but that South Barn definitely needs some work. This was actually one of the projects called for in the Greenmead Master Plan that we'd like to get the ball rolling with this grant that would help us do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Counsel? Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ted, we spent a lot of time and effort doing the Greenmead Master Plan, and I'm glad to see you actively pursuing funds to get it done and get steps moving in that direction.
Fingers crossed we actually receive the grant. That would be great.
I have a lot of faith in you, Ted. I'll offer an approving for consent.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Davis, you do pretty well.
I feel good about it. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
If you could just pick up that metal dog now.
Yes, yes. Moving on to item number 11 is a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming Thursday, April 25, 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Livonia. Mr. Moore, the Assistant Director of Public Works, to be celebrated at 3:00 p.m. at the Japanese Immersion Elementary School at 36611 Curtis. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. You just stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It's Thursday this year, the last Thursday of the month rather than the last Friday because Livonia Public School doesn't have school on Fridays, so. And Councilperson Tasnik has volunteered to fill in for us too, so she will be aiding the ceremony along.
If it's fitting, it's yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Moore, thank you for inviting me to be the mistress of ceremonies at Arbor Day this year, so I'd be happy to offer approval on consent because we want to make sure this happens.
Yes.
Doug, do you have the tree outfit, the costume?
I don't ever, haven't seen it in forever.
It might be at McCullough's house, though. You have to wear the tree outfit since you're
Let me, let me pull that motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we already voted on committee assignments, so.
Yeah. We'll find that video for you.
Yeah. No, I'd be thrilled to be there. Thank you.
We have an approving on consent. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Mr. Moore, you're all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 12, which is a request to release development bonds from the Engineering Division for the Dover Sites, Dover Court Site Condominiums located on the south of Ann Arbor Trail, west of Dover Avenue in the southwest quadrant of Section 33. Mr. Lear, I assume?
Yes. Thank you. This is one of our housekeeping items. Once a subdivision has completed all its requirements, got all the storms cleaned, everything finished off, we come and release the bonds that are remaining to the developer, and basically we can close out the entire project with this one. The developer has finished everything to our satisfaction, and we are requesting approval to release the remaining bonds in the amount of $26,500 to Crossman's Court Subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to see you here instead of Mr. Zlinsik. Just joking. I know he's watching at home right now, but this, yeah, fairly standard procedure. I'd like to make an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent, Mr. Lear. Thank you. Moving on to item number 13 is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2024 Concrete Road Program by extending contract 23-C unit prices with hard rock concrete. This comes to us from the Engineering Division, and the contract is in the amount of $4,523,753.63. Mr. Lear?
Yes. As a common with all our yearly paving contracts, we try and get extensions on previously approved ones to try and not only keep the same contractor that has done a good job, as well as get the best price that we can and try and take advantage of the previous bid prices. In this case, Hard Rock Construction has basically agreed to extend their unit prices. There is a couple of new items because of the, the roads that we're doing this year had a couple of additional items that he gave prices for, but the, the bulk of it is all extending last year's contract unit prices, and we are requesting approval to award the contract in the amount of $4,523,752.63 to hard rock concrete. Mr. Tony Grimaldi is here in the audience if you'd like to ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lear, just, just because I want to hear these words if it's the case, is it the belief of the Engineering Department that no competitive advantage would be had if we went out to bid on this?
Since they were the low bidder on last year's projects, and they are agreeing to hold those prices still again this year, we believe that there would be no advantage and it would probably actually increase our costs if we were to go out for bids with increase our costs if we were to go out for bids with this one.
And potentially Hard Rock could increase their bid price as well.
And that has happened in the past. You know, it it resets the field for everyone, so now we're we're playing with twenty-four dollars instead of twenty-three dollars.
Yeah, I understand. So I think, you know, first and foremost, I'll note that Hard Rock, we have a lot of great vendors in the city. Hard Rock has done an amazing job. And I think it's, it's important to note for people watching at home and people who've had the opportunity to see a lot of the concrete neighborhood streets that have been redone have been done by Hard Rock, and it's an amazing process to watch. It comes in there and the way they tear up the road and they put it all back together. It's really amazing and it's really impressive and the work has stood the test of time. So I'm happy to support this. Just because of the price of it, I'm gonna offer this for the regular agenda. I think it's smart when we have contracts of this size to go on the regular agenda. And while we have you here as well, I'll just note that there's a lot of kids out there who appreciate your participation in Touch a Truck. So I, I don't think that's in the contract, but I think there's a lot of kids out there expecting to come out there year after year. So thank you, sir.
Think you're making that a part of the motion?
I don't think I have to.
Well, we're gonna approve it on the regular. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? State your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi, I'm John Donabedian from one four two three six Beatrice. Just in this last autumn, we've been doing a lot of concrete work in in my neighborhood and I'm just kind of curious, especially knowing the the huge expense, the expenditure for a million dollars of tax, and those are Livonia tax dollars. I just wonder like what the criteria is for some of the the replacement? Because I mean, I'm looking at my neighborhood, which is probably about sixty years old, but.
Sure, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Jolly.
So I can give you a very simplified answer here, and Mr. Lear and the Engineering Department could probably go much more extensively. If you go on the Livonia City website, there is, there is a section for road repairs and maintenance. In almost every single, I'd say, what, fifty-foot length of city-owned streets in the city has what's called a pacer rating. And it it goes from basically zero to ten and they're color-coded in terms of areas of need. And the city addresses the highest areas of need first, and the goal is to get all the roads to be represented green, meaning closer to the the ten number as opposed to the zero number. But it's really interesting to look at, and I'm sure you'd find your your neighborhood and your street on there. And if you have further questions, I think Mr. Lear could follow up with you during business hours.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You can actually see and you can actually see where the dollars are gonna be going in subsequent years.
And I guess, I mean, it is all very interesting, the whole process. It's very impressive, but I just, I question some of the choices because I know like there's areas where, there have been problems with this and that haven't been touched. But then there's areas which are like little courts that are very, have low traffic that are being redone. And so I'm just, I question some of the the choices of what's taking priority at such an expensive infrastructure.
Yeah, these are all good questions. So basically, the Engineering Department has X amount of money that comes in by way of a millage specifically dedicated for Livonia road repairs and maintenance. Those dollars are annually available and the Engineering Department, based on the pacer ratings that I just told you about, they make a list of high priority targets based on those pacer ratings. And then they've actually established a separate Citizens Advisory Committee who gets on literally Livonia Transportation Bus and drives around the city and reviews and inspects all the different areas. And then they're the ones who make the recommendations. So it's not anybody up here on this board, and it's not the Engineering Department acting on their own. They have this citizen advisory group that helps out as well.
Okay, well, that's, that's interesting. And that's why I was wondering who who is making the the decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Any other further audience communication? Seeing none. We have an approving on regular. I will now move on to item number fourteen, which is a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick Incorporated for the construction engineering services for the twenty twenty-four Concrete Road Program from the Engineering Division. Mr. Lear?
Okay, in conjunction with the the Concrete Road Paving Program, our consultant is doing, their their engineering contract is based on the overall contract price for the Concrete Road Program. So this is a request to amend their contract amount to reflect the percentage of the new road concrete program. Mr. Scott Lockwood from AEW is here in the audience if you have any questions on them, but they were previously our engineer on this project for many years and basically their their fees are put forth through the QBS system and this is the dollar amount that they are entitled to based on the the road paving project.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Jolly?
AEW is one of those valued vendors and service providers who works hand in hand with the city. I'm happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We are gonna move on to item number fifteen, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty twenty-four Concrete Road Maintenance and Selective Slab Program by extending contract twenty-three dash J unit prices with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions. This is from the Engineering Department in the amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seven, two hundred and fifty-four cents. Mr. Lear?
Okay, much like the the Concrete Road Program, Great Lakes Contracting is our our approved contractor for last year's selective slab and maintenance program. This one is taking care of smaller areas that residents have called in on for various problems as well as some concentrated areas where we see a lot of complaints. They're, they were approved last year. They are extending their unit prices with the exception of a small increase in the mobilization and then some newer item, a couple of newer items that weren't in last year's project. We are asking to have the council approve a contract in the amount of one million, six hundred, twenty-six thousand, four hundred, seventy-two and fifty-four cents to Great Lakes Contracting.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Counsel? Mr. Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Lear, so these are again, if there's a water main break and someone's front lawn and we have to come out and fix it, then Great Lakes will come out and patch that portion of driveway or small portions of road and what have you, right? Whereas in Hard Rock, it's gonna be redoing the larger portions of the road.
Not necessarily. We actually have another project that is for water main break repairs. And actually, Great Lakes Contracting has that contract as well. This is for locations where we've had trees heaving one or two slabs and we're gonna go in and just tear out those couple of slabs instead of doing an entire road, which the concrete program would do. So that's more or less, this one is spotty fixes or smaller versions of the the road program itself.
Thank you. I'll make an approving.
Leave it on regular?
We'll put it on regular because it's a large amount as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank Councilman Donovan. Anything else further from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We have an improvement on regular. We will move on to item number sixteen, which is a request to amend the contract with AEW for the construction engineering services for the twenty twenty-four Concrete Road Maintenance slash Selective Slab Program from the Engineering Division. Mr. Lear?
Okay, much the same as the Concrete Road one. The AEW is our consulting engineer for the slab and maintenance program. So this is a request to amend their contract to follow along with the dollar amount approved through the contract to Great Lakes Contracting.
Thank you, Mr. Lear.
A lot of contracting there.
Counsel, do I have direction? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I didn't see an amount on there. Could you tell me what the amount is?
Okay, the amount should be two hundred and three thousand and three hundred and nine dollars.
Okay. I'll offer an approving on consent.
We've been approving from on consent from Mr. Morgan. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We will move on to item number seventeen, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty twenty-four Line Lane Marking Program by extending contract twenty-three dash eight unit prices with PK Contracting Incorporated. This is from the Engineering Division in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Lear?
Okay, the third of our annual contracts. PK Contracting was approved last year. We are looking to extend their their contract one, one more year based on the same unit prices. Looking for approval of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the lane line and basically for all the Livonia roads.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. I I've got to tell a funny story. So I used to intern for the city back in two nine, two thousand and one. And I remember on the back of the truck getting the receipts and measuring each line because the, I mean, they had to find work to keep me busy, so I'm there literally counting every line lane. It was, it was intriguing. It's crazy how it works.
And they gave you a ruler to do it, right?
They did. I don't, I don't think that they took any of my analytics back. They just said, oh, did you have fun? I said, absolutely.
Mr. Lear, were those those lines you said were crooked all the time?
Uh, we we hope not. I think that's another contractor that does those.
You know what? It just gives me a little bit of subject matter expertise, but I appreciate it. It's fascinating.
I'll offer an approving for consents.
We have an approving for consent. Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We are gonna move on to number eighteen, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty twenty-four Sidewalk Repair Program bless you, by extending contract twenty-three dash G unit pricing with Joe Rotundo Construction Corp. And request to authorize an appropriation expenditure to precision concrete cutting. This is from the Engineering Department in the amount of one million, two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and fifty and dollars and fifty-two cents. These are all big numbers. Mr. Lear?
Okay, thank you. Once again, another one of our yearly programs. Joe Rotundo Construction was awarded the contract, well, basically, many years in a row now. We've had real good luck with them. They do a great job. We're looking, he has more or less extended the unit prices with a small increase roughly five percent on the sidewalk quantities. It compares favorably to what we've seen on other jobs that have opened in other cities. There's still, these prices would still be below what we're seeing opened up on in other places such as the Royal Oak one that was referenced in the packets. It includes five hundred and thirty-one locations where we've had either sidewalk heaved, called in for dangerous, or we've gone out and found ourselves and need to be fixed for various reasons. We'd like to request the council authorize expenditure or a extension of the Concrete Sidewalk Program to Joe Rotundo for one million, two oh two, seven fifty and fifty-two cents. I will mention, Mr. Rotundo is in the audience on his birthday, no less, so. If you have any questions.
Vice President?
Thank you. I was actually gonna offer a denial motion on this, but now that it's his birthday. No, the Rotundos have been great community partners with us. Their bid is absolutely fair and the small price increase is definitely due to materials. You can see that right in the bid, so. With that, being that it is over a million dollars, I'll offer it for the regular.
We've been approving for regular. Anything further from council?
Can we sing happy birthday?
I was thinking about that. Mr. Rotundo, you know, you wanna get up here? Happy birthday.
Seeing nothing from council. Do we have any communication from the audience on this last item? Seeing none. Well, that concludes the study agenda. Is there any audience communication for items not on the study agenda? Seeing none. Any closing remarks from council? Seeing none. We are gonna adjourn the study meeting at eight forty. Good night, Livonia, and happy birthday, Mr. Rotundo.